Hey, everybody. I think it's time to start the meeting. I call this meeting as the Divine Independent School Board of Trustees to order at 6:30 PM. Let the record show that a formal report now is present that this meeting has been re-called and that notice of the meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Governor's Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 501. Let the record show that trustees, Herman Moreno, Carrie James, Chris Davis, Alvin Hines, and Ms. Pepper, present. Would you please go ahead and present the legions.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Put your hands up in prayer, please. Father, we're so grateful for this time that you give us. We're grateful for the rain that you've sent our way and the change of the seasons. We pray that you bless us now as we talk the full truth of this is of our district that we may make the right decisions for everyone involved. We pray that you'll help us, especially we thank you for the passage of all the bonds and the VATRE that we would have had. We're just grateful that we'll be able to do more for our district than we would in the past. We pray that you'll help us make the right decisions as to take this money and use it to the benefit of our kids. Forgive us now for the times that we fail you and bless us, we pray in my name. Thank you. May we see them. Okay, we've come to the time of continuous communication. We have down.
I just wanted to address y'all because I know you probably normally hear from teachers when things are negative or when there's a problem, but I just wanted to come down and say thank you. Thank you for listening. Thank you for trying to make changes and just hearing our voice, and we appreciate y'all. Just, that's it.
Thanks. Time for you. Okay, next we move to consider and act on the resolution of the RAC plan of finance and directly visit the staff and consultants.
Good morning, Madam President, Ms. Pepper, members of the board, Dr. Grandjean and staff. The record, Robert DeHittina with DeHittina Galvano Lawrence. We are the school district's financial advisor. Congratulations again on a successful bond election and a VATRE election. About eighty-four percent of the school districts that called an election on November the seventh passed, and only fifty-eight percent, I believe, passed their VATRE election. So again, congratulations on vote. We're here, I'm here to present the limited tax school building bond series 2024 Plan of Finance presentation. If you turn to page two, this is the same information we have provided to the board the last few months right before the bond election was called. We have property values on column B, and we're still assuming a financing of eleven million two hundred and fifty-five thousand on column E, going out roughly thirty years, estimated interest rate of about four point nine eight percent. The promise that the board gave to the community that the INS tax rate would not go up, assuming we sell the financing, interest rate comes in as is. If you notice on column K, the INS tax rate on column K, row thirteen, will not increase above the twenty-four cents that's currently levied. It will stay either at twenty-four cents or slightly lower. We'll know for certain when the property values come in on column B sometime in July, certified late July. So we do have that cash defecence that we will be closing on sometime in March of April of 2024, roughly five hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars on column H. Now, if you turn to page three, the timetable of events, we're here this evening to the board consider approving the plan of finance and also reimbursement resolution, the next item. If this item, Plan of Finance, is approved, we'll have a rating agency conference call and a due diligence conference call on December the nineteenth. That will be with the superintendent, Dr. Grandjean, and Shannon with the financial advisor and bond counsel, and with the other working group members. In between today and the nineteenth of December, we'll be working on the preliminary official statement, submit the permanent school fund bond insurance application by the end of the month. And the plan is to price the bonds on Wednesday, January the seventeenth, and come back at a special board meeting on Thursday, January the eighteenth. Today is just allowing us to work as a group together. You'll have your superintendent, CFO, quarterback, and everything, working with the consultants, financial advisor, bond counsel, underwriters, and their attorneys on January the eighteenth. At that meeting, special meeting, that's when the board will be considering approving the financing as final. On that evening, we'll present the final interest rate, the debt service annual payments, and if that item is approved, the district will be getting the bond proceeds on February the fifteenth. And the account will be created by your staff, and that's where the paying agent will wire the funds to on February the fifteenth. If you turn to page four, the working group, we have the issuer, Divine Independent School District, financial advisor, bond counsel. The underwriters are Oppenheimer and Company, BOKF, Cavereta Capital Markets, underwriters' counsel, their attorney has not been determined yet. If this item is approved, I'll contact the senior underwriter to see who they want to appoint as their legal counsel. The paying agent is BOKF Financial Securities, NA. That concludes my portion of the presentation. If Ms. Pepper, yourself, any board members or staff have any questions? Again, we're not approving the financing today. It's just allowing us to work together as a working group and come back in January.
Senator, we can share clearly and get a good name. The authority before you get there.
Yes, ma'am.
As Mr. Pepper will refer, whether we have authorized a plan of finance in the regular district's staff and consultants.
And I have a motion by Henry and a second one, Gary, to approve the resolution of the RAC Plan of Finance of the district's staff. On January the fifteenth, access five minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Pepper, and I believe I'm gonna stay up here for the next item to cover for Clay Benford.
Consider taking action on resolving the staff's district's intention to reimburse itself for the prior lawful expenditure of funds for the proceeds of one or more serious taxes and obligations.
Yes, ma'am. Again, for the record, Robert DeHittina with DeHittina Galvano Lawrence, School District's financial advisor. This item is normally presented by your bond counsel, McCall Parkinson Horton. They couldn't be here this evening, so I'm just gonna briefly go over it. What this resolution allows the board to do and staff, that if there's any projects that need to be funded currently or start the process on now, and you need to start spending money towards those projects, approving this resolution allows you to take money from your general fund, and I'm just gonna use an example, say two hundred thousand dollars goes towards one of the projects that were on the bond election. Approving this item allows you that when you obtain the bond proceeds on February the fifteenth, when the bond money comes in, you could take that two hundred thousand from the bond proceeds and reimburse the general fund. Without approving this item, you cannot legally transfer that money from bond proceeds to the general fund. So this is just a safety net. This is just giving you the opportunity that if you need to, you can, and if you don't approve it, there's no way you can do it. It doesn't mean you have to do it, but it just gives you that opportunity that if you want to, you legally can.
Move to approve a resolution establishing the district's intention to reimburse itself for the prior lawful expenditure of funds for the proceeds of one or more serious taxes and obligations.
Okay, and motion of this and second by Gary to approve this resolution and reimburse the agency.
Thank you, Ms. Pepper, members of the board and staff. Wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving and a Merry Christmas and happy holidays. Y'all take care, and hopefully we'll see each other again. I know we'll be talking to your staff, Dr. Grandjean and Shannon. Happy holidays, and we'll see y'all on January. Y'all take care. Have a great night. Y'all take care.
Okay, next summer, if you have a divine announcement, you can have it for church.
Well, I'm not doing it. Why? I don't see any point in putting it away. Sure you want my germs on this? Okay, well, good evening. All right, I'm gonna tell you about middle school. It's, you know, it's the lovely time when kids do everything you tell them to do. Yeah. No, actually, right now, we have about four hundred and thirty kids and one hundred and fifty-two sixth graders. Seventh, one thirty-four, eighth grade just went up to one forty-four. And thank you, thank you. District attendance award for two six weeks. Working on a third one. So far, sports, we've had three district championships, seventh grade football, eighth grade, and by the way, those little guys have been undefeated in seventh grade and eighth grade. So they're kind of pumped right now. They're looking forward to basketball this week. We'll see. Volleyball, our seventh graders did a really good job. We're working on the UIL. We start tomorrow with ready writing, and then we have editorial on Thursday, and One Act Play on December first, and then we have our actual, hoping to make it three, thirteen years in a row there for the academic UIL, and that's on December ninth. So if you want to come watch One Act Play on December second, it's in Carrizo again. Lovely drive I'll be making again, but yeah, it's okay. Okay. Yes, I believe so. We're still trying to recruit some sixth graders because they, you know, they're kind of squeamish about it, but Mr. Gary's does a good job. Oh, the attendance award, by the way, we have a couple of them having a pizza party this week because they expelled out attendance first, so we combine those. That seems to be working. Funny thing is, you know, I told the sixth graders, if you ninety-seven percent and you get a phone during recess, I look out, there's only two tables with phones out. The rest of them are playing back and forth like, works for me. Lot less I have to worry about. One of the things that we're really pushing this year is to have kids do service projects or some kind of service and give them back to the community. This is my little crew, I call them the principals crew. It's anybody and everybody that wants to join, and it's just giving them a voice. So if we have problems, I bring them together and we come up with solutions. But we needed to fill in all the gaps in the rock garden, so they gave up their recess time to go out there and move rocks. And the top part, we have some kids that have been helping with Ms. Paloschik with Life Skills kiddos. This particular little guy, we couldn't get him to inside the building, then we couldn't get him out of the room, and then I played soccer with him down the hallway one day trying to get him back in the room, but these girls have gone in there and been working with him, and he's going in and out now, going to PE, and they get their work done at the end of the day so they can go over there and spend five, ten minutes with him, or those kids anyway. And they're really enjoying it, and some of those are some of my tough kids that have decided to take that on, so like, great. This is just some of the hobbies that we had, we introduced last year. It was something I was trying to get together since way back before COVID. These are just some of the things. We had cooking, we had robotics, we had yoga, we had scrapbooking, we had bongo fishing, and these are just hobbies that the teachers have, that they introduce to the kids, and it really made for good relationships with the kids. The kids really enjoyed it, and so my thinking is, if I can get these kids and get them to make sure they know that we care about them and we want to do some stuff with them, they seem to be doing better in the classroom. And despite all the trouble we had at the end of the year last year for testing, they really settled down and they did better than I thought they would, considering everything they went through. And this is more the cooking and the quilting, and the kids actually put together quilting squares and made a blanket for Coach Sanchez's little girl. They presented that, and I think these guys were jewelry making, so they had all kinds of things. Line dancing, and then we also had, of course, shop. Mr. Moore is a popular guy, even more so now, I think. And of course, we like to have fun with the guys, so I got taped to the wall, and that was a dollar a strip, so they made, I think, three hundred and ninety-four bucks, and my sister sent them two hundred dollars to put me back up. I just got the check yesterday. Mr. Styris likes to get around the dance there. Up above, that's Mr. Crisp. He did his own makeup. I thought that was kind of cool. That was during a Halloween thing. And then the Skunk Squad, that was when we had that little skunk that came inside the building, and I bought the guys all a Skunk Squad t-shirt, and we've had fun with that. But basically, you know, middle school is middle school. We have our little problems, they kind of go crazy. We have started a new thing, I call it Late Start Friday. We really don't, we just flip-flop into our Pride First, and that gives teachers time to do, from seven-thirty to eight-thirty, do PLCs and planning together because we really don't have the time within the day. But if we do that, I move teachers, not kids, around, so they go to Pride class and they're working on IXL, which is a program that we're using to work with their math and their reading. So everybody does IXL during that time. And then second semester, once we do all the intervention with most of the kids, we'll go to NearPod, and that's Character Ed, and there's a lot of lessons in there, and we've had success with that also. So that's basically where middle school's at. We've got three good groups, and they're working hard, so far, so good, so.
Have you seen anything with the IXL?
Yes, some of the teachers have been talking about, they see a big difference, and kids really like getting on it. Before, when we had, oh, what was the other one? Gee, I've already forgotten. Study Island, yes. Study Island basically let them play games, but the kids got to where they're like, uh-uh, and they would just mess up all the time. And really, Study Island was really heavy on the reading, even in the math portion, and it wasn't really fun reading either. So we're also doing New Zella now too with the social studies and the ELA classes, using those, and that should help them also with their reading. But now I find that the kids themselves, I go, okay, guys, if you're worried, I had a couple in the library the other day because the teacher had to leave, and so like, okay, I take the class. I say, take out IXL, man, didn't take anything. They logged on, got on, and they went to town. I just walked around checking on them. So they seem to like it. I think so too. They've really taken to it. It gives you suggestions on what skills you still need to work on, or it moves you on, or the teachers can basically set it up so they have to use certain skills in working with the programs. So I think it's been a success so far.
And speak to that they have a lot of these teachers to kind of see what their people do and obviously. Do you enjoy being in there?
It'd be kind of interesting to see what the new teachers want to do, so. Like Cosby always did cubes, Rubik's Cube, and he had a bunch of kids all, no Cosby, no Rubik's Cube, so we'll see. Maybe Juarez, I told him the other day, I said, you realize Cosby had, he goes, oh. So we'll see what he comes up with. But basically, you have any questions?
You mentioned the sixth graders, which are the sample, they don't want to join anything, but as they get reactive, is that you have a high percentage of all these students joining either academic UIL or whatever it is?
They'll all join something. Yeah, once they get to eighth grade, they start dropping off a little bit, which is also typical. The kids that really want to get into the academics, they stay with it. But let's face it, most of our kids are more inclined to do sports than they do anything else. But, you know, try to entice them whatever way we can.
I'm used to saying good morning, but good evening, everybody. All righty, time for our usual update. Every school district is required by law to have a school health advisory council, also in a SHAC, so that's what we're gonna, we're gonna talk about today. I updated our member list because it has changed just a little bit. We've, for example, Ms. Hernandez used to be our middle school nurse, so she's now a parent representative instead of a school representative, so just some little changes like that. We just have one new member that I would like to have approved, Mr. Sanchez, and he's the new take her manager through food services. Always like to make sure, as well as Ms. Annette, but also our food manager through health services is involved in SHAC. That way, we can make sure we've got all hands on deck when it comes to nutrition and health for our kiddos. So SHAC is a group of individuals representing segments of the community, school district, and we just help to coordinate to provide different programs, learning, and health services for not just the kids, but the community as well. These are our eight components of SHAC. They're still the same, the state hasn't changed anything. These are some different legislation guidelines. Parent has to be part of SHAC. At least five members have to be approved by the board. I think Ms. Schneider and I work pretty hard to make sure we ask for everyone to be approved. We don't just add anybody on there, and we submit recommendations regarding our health education curriculum. Our goals, we like to keep them consistent, we don't change them too much. One thing that we started this school year that we're hoping we'll see some good results at the end of the school year is our fitness gram. Instead of just doing it at the end of the year, we do it at the beginning and the end. That way, we can see a better curve on where our students started and where we're ending. And then that helps us to see if we need to make any adjustments within our physical education curriculum. All righty, this year, with our health fair and back to school event, it was really exciting. Last summer, we had about seventy students that came through. School supplies were out within forty-five minutes. This year, we had a hundred and twenty students that were signed in. That's just who signed in. There was still a handful that, for, you know, any personal reasons, they didn't want to sign their student or their family members in, which is totally fine, but we did have a hundred and twenty that were signed in, so we easily doubled our numbers from last summer, which is very exciting. We decided to do a sign-in, that way that would also help us once Thanksgiving and Christmas time came around, we can kind of narrow down to see which families in the community may need a little more assistance during those times. We also had our West leaners and our Medina County Health Unit that came out to provide services and education for our families, and the county health unit also started on approving immunization records for us, for those that have questions. Our wellness plan is a living document. We go over it at every meeting. We have started last year a student food survey that we send back. We do that at just the high school level, and that is done through their social studies and history classes. We were a little nervous, we weren't too sure if kids were gonna start asking for wagyu steak or filet mignon or anything like that, but they did really good. Really good feedback. About ninety-five percent of them participate, and that helps us as a SHAC committee to be able to see where we need to make improvements, what we need to add or take away. As always, we discuss reasons, kids need to stay home from school due to illness, symptoms, and what have you. COVID's not a real big thing that we have to deal with, thankfully, anymore. It's still there, it still exists, always gonna have it, but we're back to more of our usual flu, strep, stomach bug, lots of strep and stomach bug right now. Couple cases of flu, not too many, about less than ten, and ninety-five percent of those are flu B cases. Friday, I saw forty-two students through my office, not to mention all my athletes. Majority of them were strep or stomach bug. So not that they're not a big deal, but those are a little easier to get them recovered and back to school quicker. Last year, we started a wellness spot in my office as a pilot, just to see how it would do. We've got vitamin C, emergency elderberry teas, honey, things like that. It's not for the students because we have to have parental consent, but it's more for the staff. If all of a sudden they're not feeling well, I've got that there on hand for them. It's become pretty popular, so I'll start adding it in the other clinics as well, so that helps. We had our annual vaccine clinic on the seventh. We get flu, shingles, pneumonia, tetanus, COVID vaccines, all your boosters for staff to come. I see that look, Mr. Davis. I scared him a little bit, but that's okay. We still have Narcan at every campus, including DAP and the Learning Center. This school year, we've also added choking hazard response bags. They're bright yellow, just in case anyone, staff, or student starts to choke while they are here on campus. All of our minutes and agendas are posted on the webpage. We have also added two new staff members to our medical team at the middle school. We hired an LVN. We have Ms. Jasmine Bazan, and she's been great. And on the twenty-seventh, when we come back from break, we'll have an LVN, also that's starting at the intermediate that we're really excited about. So growing and improving, growing pains aren't always fun when you have new faces, but they're excited, we're excited, so it'll be a good year. Any questions? Thank you.
Good evening, Ms. Pepper, board members. I wanted to take you through our snapshot. We just had snapshot. As you all know, snapshot is a count of students in our special programs throughout the district. It helps to drive our funding for the next coming school year, and so it's always the last Friday of October, and so we've just come past that, and so I wanted to share some information, kind of an overview of what special ed is looking like, and a little bit of a history for you tonight, okay? So what are our numbers? So when I came in 2014-15 school year, we had a hundred and seventy-eight students in our special ed program. At our snapshot this year, we have three hundred and thirty-nine students that we serve every day. And so I gave you a little bit of an increase, it shows you the change over time. I also did that for our Section 504 program, so students who have an identified disability but may not need specially designed instruction fall under that Section 504. And so you can see that over the past nine years, we have almost doubled the number of students that we have in our special ed program. That's gonna be important for you to remember as I share some other figures and things with you. We've also had about a fifty percent increase in our Section 504. So that's a large number of students, change over time, one hundred and sixty-one for sped and sixty-three for Section 504. In the meantime, what does our personnel look like? So our special ed teachers on our Severick campus, we have three self-contained ADL classrooms, our life skills classrooms. When I started back in fourteen-15, we had two, and so we're up there. We also have one resource teacher, but the number of instructional aides who are supporting those classrooms, the high needs of those students in that classroom have grown significantly, and so we currently have ten special ed aides who help to support those three particular classrooms, and then one and a half who support, because we have one who does life skills in the morning and resource in the afternoon, to help to support Mary Brown with resource and inclusion. Then at our intermediate school, we continue to have one teacher who supports both elementary and intermediate for our behavior students, that's our TESS classroom. TESS stands for Therapeutic Educational Support System, and so it's a support system. It's not necessarily a place where students are all day long. Now, they can be, but for the most part, that's not what we're looking at. We also still have one self-contained classroom, and then we have two inclusion and resource teachers. On the flip side, the instructional aides, we have one aide who works with our behavior teacher, one aide currently in our life skills classroom, and then two aides who assist with inclusion and resource support. Over at middle school, we still have one self-contained life skills classroom, and we are down to one aide supporting that classroom. A couple of years back, we've had up to three, but we're down to one. As student needs change, that personnel changes. So a lot of times, instructional aid support staff move with the student. So a lot of times instructional aid, support staff move with the student. And so as that need moves to the next campus or whatever, that support moves as well. And there's two resource and inclusion teachers over there. We're happy to say we were down to just one last year, and we've been able to fill that position. There's also two TESTS classroom support aides for our middle school. We currently have one vacancy there. And then we have one vacancy in our life skills classroom. And we have two instructional aides who support the resource and inclusion setting. Then at our high school, we have the one TESTS teacher who supports both middle school and high school. And then she has another TESTS aide who helps with the high school students. We also have one self-contained classroom there. And we have five aides who support that classroom. That classroom's population has grown significantly. And so we've been able to also add job coaching, where students go out to a work setting and learn to be on the job and meeting those requirements. So we've been pretty happy with that. We also have our three inclusion teachers at the high school. One teacher throughout the day is in our content mastery class, and the other two teachers are out and about, and they swap that around. They don't have any support staff for that. In our assessment and related services, so when we look at the nine-year differences here, again, one special ed director, we increased by one LSSP because we have one in training right now. So she's not full-time yet, but she's in training. So we currently have one full-time LSSP, the school psychologist, and then one who is finishing up her degree. We have three diagnosticians. We had three diagnosticians in 1415 as well. We have one art facilitator, so that's an increase in a position. And we also have a special ed counselor who is a licensed counselor. And so at the time when I started in 1415, we had the LSSP picked up those counseling duties. Student needs have significantly changed. We do a lot more counseling now than we have ever done in the past. We currently have three SLPAs. Those are the Speech Language Pathology Assistants. Two of them are employees. One is a contractor that works for us two days out of the week. And we have two contracted SLPs, Speech Language Pathologists. Back in 1415, we had two SLPs on staff. We had one SLPA, and we had one part-time SLP who is a contractor. Right now, we have two secretarial staff that support the programming. Back in 1415, we had three secretarial staff. So we've downsized that a little bit. So what is significant about this? I want you to look at that number of assessment staff. Okay, we're sitting at almost exactly the same number of assessment staff, and we have an increase in our number of kiddos significantly. What I want you to remember too is every three years, we reevaluate students. So it's not just the kids coming in for an initial evaluation, but then every three years, we have a regular rotation of about a third, so about 100, are getting reevaluated, or 110. So kind of bear that in mind as we move forward in the future. I wanted to give you a little bit of a picture about our funding as well. So I went back, and this is our federal funding. So from 1516 school year, our 224 money is our regular special ed funds. We can use that for our 3 through 21-year-old students. Our 225 funds are your early childhood special ed funding. So those can only be used for students who are 3 through 5 years old. Okay? And so in 1516, we had a total of $358,000 that we got from the federal government. Now, all these many years later, in 2324, we get $410,007. So you can see that our federal funding is not keeping up with the massive growth that we have seen. So what does that mean? That means state and local funds has to pick this up, because it's not less expensive, it's more expensive. So back in 1516, our general fund, our 199 fund, was $1,485,318. This year's budgeted special ed funds is $2,391.19. Okay? And I'm always asking Shannon for more money. But what I want you to understand too is, look at those percentages. So back in 1516, the state, our state and federal was about 76% of our total expenses for special education. And our federal funding was at about 24%. Now, we're at almost 83% that we pull out of the state and local funds, and we're only getting 17% out of the federal funds. And so just so that you can kind of keep an eye on this and understand what a good job I think that we do budgeting our amount and keeping our funds where they need to be. With special education comes a ton, a ton of accountability. Okay? And so a couple years back, the TEA decided we didn't have enough accountability. And so they increased by 23 specific areas of indicators for what they call the special ed self-assessment. Okay? So this is a self-analysis that we have to do of our program, but it's a very structured self-analysis. So it's not you just do whatever you want. No. You have to follow their rules about how you do it. So of those 23 indicators, 18 of them deal with how are we implementing special education? What are we doing on those kinds of things? So I gave you a kind of a list of what they are. One of them deals specifically with behavioral kinds of things. One indicator talks about different kinds of placement. Another kind of an indicator talks about your student outcomes. Okay? And I'm going to talk to you in a few minutes about our RDA, our results-driven accountability. So you can see, this same accountability comes flooding back at us at many different levels. So again, this is how did our kids do on STAR? And how are our kids doing on graduation? And how are they doing on secondary transition? Well, secondary transition, just for one, we are evaluated in three different accountability programs on that. Same thing. They're looking at the same thing. And so you have to understand that when we start to look at accountability for special education especially, is one thing is going to impact you in multiple areas. Okay? And then of course, there's always family engagement. So then each of these, we have to self-rate as to what kind of professional development do we provide? What kind of communication is happening? What kind of data are you collecting and evaluating for that? And how is your implementation? So of those, then you have to say, you go by a rubric, and you have to say, are we in the developed state, which is the lowest end of the spectrum? Are we proficient? We're doing pretty good at that. Or are we exemplary? Okay? So one of the things that kind of concerned us as we went through our numbers from last year, is we only had two that when we polled our entire district, there was only two that they felt that we were exemplary in. And that way frankly, was identification and finding kids, our child find pieces. Okay? We had five that were over there in that developed stage. Okay? Not necessarily that that is an accurate representation, but it is the perception of our staff. Okay? And then the rest fell with improficient. So we talked about it, and we decided, well, we got to do something about that. Okay? Because I'm kind of a perfectionist, and you know, a little bit. And so I'd like us all to be over there in exemplary. And so we've implemented a program that we've started to roll out to all of our district personnel that gives them information about each of these 23 indicators. So there's a one-sheet information chart. They call it a monograph. Okay? So we send that out, and then we send out a survey with it that says, okay, so read the monograph so you know, let's say about child find. Here's how we do child find. These are the requirements. Now answer some questions to see how well you retain the information that we just presented to you. Then we'll use that as our data source to say, yes, we've done professional development. We've taught everybody these pieces that they need to know about. Okay? So that's how we're addressing this area of accountability. Then of course, there's our normal state performance plan indicators. There's 17 indicators. You'll notice, oh, look, graduation rate and dropout and transition, they're all back in our bases. So the ones on the right-hand column here, timely evaluation and child find, early childhood transition, secondary transition, post-secondary outcomes. All of those require us to do a data entry up to the state, uploads to the state, separate than just our regular PMS reporting. All of the other indicators come through our PMS reporting, through our finance reports and those kinds of things. So those are the keys that we have to then go in and do a report specifically. And so people always ask me, what do you do over the summer? Oh, that's what I do. I do all that reporting. Results-driven accountability, our RDA. Our ratings will be out this Thursday. They're going to release our RDA. So that results-driven accountability, how do we do on our STAR test? How do we do on our graduation? How do we do on transition? How do we do on behavior? All of those things fall under that. And so when the RDA report comes out, it drops kids into three different buckets. Okay? So there's our bilingual English learner group. There's our other special populations group. And there's our sped group. Okay? And so in the other special populations, they're looking at your kids who are in foster care, those kids who are on McKinney-Vento and are homeless, and then those who are military tied within our district. So they pull those kids into a subgroup. Okay? In our bilingual program, there's 11 areas that they look at, most of which are the same, you know, how do we do on STAR? Who's dropout? Those kinds of things. Tell passes in that one too. And then in our special ed, in our special pops, there's only three areas that they look at. STAR, of course, being one of them. And then for special education, there's 18 separate categories that include disproportionality and all sorts of other things. So that chart that I have for you there is, in each of those 18 areas, we're going to get what they call a determination level. So it'll be a zero, one, two, three, or four. Depending on how many one, two, threes, and fours you have, and you don't want four, ever, that will determine what kind of staging we were at. Okay? What's interesting about RDA is it's all kind of like on a bell curve. So the better the state does, the better you have to do. Okay? And so it's always a moving target. So until they come out with the actual staging, we won't know exactly where we fall. Last year and the year before, we were in stage one. I'm hoping to stay in stage one. And so it's not reasonable to expect special ed students to be in stage zero. That means they're all passing their STAR. They're all passing their STAR. They really don't need specially designed instruction and special ed services. Just my little soapbox. Oh, I lost something. I broke it. There you go. Okay, sorry. All right. There's also required postings that we have to do. You know, I always like to go on the website and I see everybody's, you know, got their pictures and all the fun stuff. My page isn't so fun. My page has all the required things. You must post this. You must post that. So I kind of just give you a little list of the things that they've managed to add this year are on the left-hand column there, and then all of our regular requirements. And so we make that available so that our parents can go on our website, find the information that they need, get the contact person that they need to get with. Okay? And so that's a pretty extensive piece. This year also, there has been some vast increases in accountability for our dyslexia evaluation and our dyslexia services. And so the state has come up with several new requirements for us. House Bill 3928 deals with all sorts of requirements for who is at the ARD committee meeting, who is responsible for being a participant in the evaluation process, how are you making those determinations? So there's a lot of magnifying glass on that particular item right now. And so we need to be up on top of that. And I'll tell you, Jenny Hagdorn has helped me immensely this year, keeping up with this piece and moving us forward on that. One of the requirements that we have is every year, we're required to have a parent informational meeting for our dyslexic kids. So there's our flyer. Our meeting is Thursday night at 5:30 over at the Divine Learning Center. We have 132 kiddos in our district who are identified as dyslexic. Most of those have shifted into our special ed program with the new requirements for special ed evaluation for dyslexia and falling within that specific learning disability of reading with those characteristics of dyslexia. And so there's been a shift and a change in how we are working with those kiddos. And so most of our secondary students, so our kiddos who are in high school, have already come through dyslexia direct instruction and all of that from when they were younger. And so most of those kids are still sitting under our Section 504, because what do they need at this point? They need accommodations and modifications and stuff. They don't need specially designed instruction. But our younger ones, we put them through a regular regimen, a regular curriculum that takes about through fit for it. So that's what we're doing with that group. Like all good presentations, as soon as I shipped it off, I remembered, oh, I forgot that. And, oh, I forgot that. But this has gone long, I know. But I do want to give you a heads up. Divine ISD was in the last group for cyclical review. The state, I've talked to you about this before, the state put in place that every district will have a review of their special ed programming. And we are in cycle six. Cycle six starts in August and September of 2024. So as we come back to school, they'll start the cyclical review for us. And that will run through December of next year. We have done a lot of work getting prepared for that. And so I don't want you to worry about it. We'll be in good shape. We have a good program, and we have good people. Thank you. Any questions? Sorry, that went too long.
Ready. So we'll do the safety and security report first. We're in the middle of forming the committee for our interview process for Director of Special Education Programs. We hope to have all of that confirmed. We're looking at the, starting Monday after we come back from Thanksgiving break, to start that process. Hopefully be able to offer the position to somebody by December 1st or the 4th, whether that's the next Monday. Also with the passage of the bond initiative, we started planning and started our conversation with Sledge Engineering and all of the financial people that we need to do, have these conversations with. Sledge is going through and recalculating all the costs of our projects to make sure that we're on point, make sure that we can promise to people, deliver everything that we were able to promise. APs and principals been working on their drill schedules for 2324, along with what is required through the governor's orders for school safety and new legislation. Principals and APs finished up the mapping and numbering of all the exterior doors as required by the new legislation that was passed. Right now, we are just going through and verifying everything. All of our campuses will engage in safety drills throughout the first semester of the school. The principals will have a schedule for that. I know that they all usually give us I know that they all usually give us a heads up right when they're planning for these things so we can keep up. We have to keep documentation. Also, we've had the drug dogs come in within the last 34 days, I believe that was Friday. And we're rescheduling the K-9 presentation at the elementary school. There was a situation that the county had to tend to on the day that they had planned to come and put on a presentation for our kiddos, show them how the valves work and, you know, hide different things, I guess, throughout the cafeteria or the gym while the kiddos get to watch that dog, which working procedures. We've forced a special session of Texas Legislature to gun. We listened to a Zoom with Representative Murray this morning, and he said without a doubt, there's probably going to be a fifth session. They're in the midst of their political chess moves. They're talking about bringing in some bills that have school finance and potentially pieces of the vouchers attached, and the House has talked about stripping down all voucher pieces and then just presenting the school finance bill. That won't fly. The governor's not going to be happy with that, so be ready. We may not see anything settled until after December or January. Superintendent piece, in case you haven't heard, the V A T R E and the bond initiative both passed. Community indicated that they have great support for our kiddos in our district. As mentioned before, all of district operations are in full swing. We're getting to the middle of year assessments and things that administrators are going to start checking the progress, see where our kiddos are, see where we're at, what we need to do. Our strategic learning initiative committee put together a group that is starting a process called Portrait of the Graduate to be able to recommend to the Board of Trustees. This is an integral part of our strategic planning. And through the help of the Senator Successful Districts and our T S L partnership, we're getting all of this at a pilot program cost of $0 to where we're at for it. In the next three years, T E A is going to require this of all of the rest of the districts in the state, and even if you go to the service center, you're looking at at least $50,000, they say. We are back on an investigation piece for our teacher incentive allotment offered through the Texas Education Agency. Mr. Gonzalez and Coach Eads have indicated that they would like to do a lot of research on this, save some action from where we were. We are in cohort F or G, as far as I remember, and one of the things that is going to be a focus of the legislature right now is making sure that they're going to keep that funding in place they promised that they would. Hopefully, we'll see some positive action after that. We're having our check-in meetings with the principals. Next check-in meeting is going to be within the next couple of weeks. In fact, I think it's probably Thursday, whatever. I don't know for sure. And this, like I mentioned before, it's a non-formal evaluation, non-evaluation setting. It's just a chance for principals and I to sit down one-on-one and focus on some coaching and talking to each other and things that we both can improve. Current vacancies for D I S D are posted on the website and statewide digital platforms. We also continue our safety visits each week. As I mentioned before, we had the trudor detection audits came through. We've had every single one of our campuses checked to this point, but through some of our safety and security meetings at Region 20, it seems like they're going to hit or come through other districts more than once. So it's very likely that we're going to see them come through again. So we're ready. We've not had a problem, so we're excited with the results that we've had. Anything else? Questions? Okay. Oh, we did receive a notice on Friday that a grant that we applied for through T E A and safety and security initiatives, we were awarded just under $1.2 million to address some things that T E A is requiring, so we're excited about that. Thanks very much.
Okay, moving on with the rest of our reports. We have any questions for the state's reports of performance, the services reports, special education report? Any questions on that? And general services reports? And press reports? Any questions on that?
I have a question about that school. I saw where the failure rates are decreasing. That's awesome. Do you know the reason behind the failures? Is it because of not committing assignments? Or is it not getting the concept? Do y'all have that data?
I think if you look at what the issue is, it's our freshmen. They're not used to the rigor. I think that we're putting forth, their failure rate is at 26%, whereas if you look at our sophomores, our juniors, and our seniors, they all show decreases in their failure rates. So they're getting used to the idea of, you know, they have homework, there's deadlines, we have grading policy, we're going to hold you accountable if you're not turning in your work on time, just those types of things. So just kind of maturity, growing up, understanding those are pieces of it. So I think our freshman teachers do a real, a great job. It's very frustrating for them to kind of get them to, you know, become high schoolers, right? So that's probably it. But the largest of the 15%, that's overall for campus, the largest factor is the 26% of our freshmen. But even that number is 2% lower than it was last year. That's the reason.
Anybody else have any questions? Senator, and includes our all of our coordinators, our many meetings. We meant to watch the time on the meeting. Budget amendment, approve the C I P A policy on C Q local technology resources, and the donations from the foundation. A donation for the TENS program, and a resolution for the vice president of the county and district directors. And we're actually discussing that. Second. If I have any questions on any of these items? We've had a lot of donations from the foundation. Very, very grateful for them. I'm seeing very large, and there's some.
I have a question for the technical.
Yes. So it takes care of machinery donation, it AP exams, teachers grants, all very nice of them, nice to do this work for somebody else. Anybody else have any questions? Are you in that? Okay. Then I have a motion to approve the consent of the vote. That's my vote. Okay, moving on to first action on consideration approval of a reservation campus and the returns and declaring the results of two special elections. A voter approval catch-up officially in a bond election and other matters in connection there. If you.
You have this packet here.
Okay. Not here.
Okay, as you guys know, our election was conducted by Medina and Frio Counties, and they provided us with the results of the election. And I'm going to just start by reading off the results. So for Proposition A, the V A T R E, in early voting, Frio County had 28 votes for, nine against. Medina County had 370 votes for, 130 against. For Election Day, Frio County had 25 votes for, 14 against. Medina County had 294 votes for, 135 against. And that brings us to a total of 717 votes for and 288 votes against for the V A T R E. And then for Proposition B, the bond election for early voting, Frio County had 20 votes for, 18 against. Medina County had 294 votes for, 206 against. And then for Election Day, Frio County had 17 votes for, 20 against. Medina County had 219 votes for, 216 against. And that brings us to a total of 550 votes for, 460 votes against. And so the packet that you see there is from Frio County. They have done their, they've had their ballot board meet already, and so those are those final results. There were two provisional ballots, and they don't appear to have been counted because they didn't change our numbers. Medina County's meeting tomorrow. We did have 10 provisional and 17 mail ballots, but they're not going to change the outcome of the election. But we might have to come back later and amend just the results. And that's going to happen.
Does anybody want to look at these, this from the Frio County? It's a list of. Okay. Okay. 71% passing. And Proposition A, 45% passing. So, do you have any questions about this? As we stated, if it comes back to the votes, we may have to. We can help with the board any of this. Everybody's okay with it?
Resumption of candidacy and returns and declaring the results of two special elections for the V A T R E and the bond and other matters in connection.
I have a motion by Chris and a second by Henry to adopt the resumption of candidacy with the returns and declaring the results of the special election. All in favor of this right now, please? Next, consider take hostile action regarding our track repairs.
Okay, good evening. One of our first budgets had the track resurfacing in it. It's around a half million dollars. It was removed and pushed to the projects maybe potentially coming out of fund balance. Because it's not in our current budget, I'm coming asking if we can RFP that project. At this point, we don't think it'll be done before track season, but we, Coach Cosby, I asked him to write a letter, it's included in your packet, to maybe possibly do the runways. I might not be saying the right terms, not the circle, but the runways at least before track season, and then start the track as soon as track season is over.
I think there are a picture for the board. You don't have any questions about that? This would be mainly right now, as well, we would go after requests for the whole track thing, but we would go ahead with the runways.
So that's not a big deal project?
As I say, if we don't have a budget or anything for the whole project right now.
I'll come back with a budget amendment once we have those.
But if you do this, they can go ahead and get the, like, the hijinks and all that stuff. They can do that.
Yeah. Depending on how much it is. If it's over 50, I'll have to come back. Either way, I'm going to have to come back and ask for a budget amendment to move that money from fund balance into the budget.
Hopefully, we'll be able to get those in by December.
One that I'm curious is, that's something you picked before track.
I think you said.
Does it have to be all one motion? Or can we say go ahead and just do what needs to be done, and we can look at the track and we can get the budget?
That's what Darren and I were going over. Could we do one project where some of it's done now and other later, or is it going to be two separate things?
That's what I'm curious.
We're going to try both, and we'll see. We don't know at this point. We wanted to get y'all's permission first to spend that kind of money before we proceeded.
This is for the first.
Yes.
I love that you're saying, who did our, we did do the whole project because if you break down, just see if the runways. I think they would have done that.
Yes. It's really bad.
It's not even so bad when you put in that type of system, as it started to release itself on the campaign, you could step on it, you know, like stepping on a piece of carpet.
So what I'm bringing tonight is just spending a couple of days.
Yes, sir.
But if we come back, he said they should practice in January.
Yes.
And they discontract me with me with.
April? April? April.
So we can get those runways done by that time.
I would think so, but I have no guarantee. Is it?
Can we raise a question essentially for?
Yes.
They usually say that a lot of them are not too late. It's first of all, the public, like, so.
They use it, too.
So will you make a motion for this? Ever since you were.
I hear you, but it's for saying that we're going to pay it out sometimes. I go after this, which is very bad. Chris is using sundown.
So if we make this motion, does that mean we're going to have to do it? See what bits and how that according to side of the question?
We'll bring the bits to you.
And that's what I was saying in the beginning, like, this is not a big deal project.
I just thought, how are we reading the motion? Are we making sure we're on something? No, fine. It's going to be a change of opinion. See any motion?
Yes.
Move to approve using sundown for papers. Call for track repair and call for all of these.
They have a motion back there, saying, to approve using sundown to pay for the track, track repair. Thank you.
Thank you.
Consider take hostile action to approve the district campus goals and objectives for the campus district.
Good evening, everybody. Thank y'all so much for being here tonight. I wanted to mention, just to make sure that everybody knows that your folks that are sitting over here are doing a whole lot of work on these improvement plans, and also the folks that are sitting over here. We appreciate the board reviewing those and taking a look to approve our objectives and goals. So we know that our objectives are going to be aligned and mutually supportive because we're using the five board goals, parent family engagement, student achievement, and curriculum instruction. And then it's going to be staff retention and recruitment and effective staff, and then our safe, healthy environment conducive to learning. So we're all aligned under those same goals, building out those objectives district-wide and then also at the campus level. So our principals meet with their site-based committees multiple times per year. They're only required to do that twice per year. They exceed that by quite a few meetings most of the time. And our district educational improvement planning team also meets at least five times a year. Everybody takes this work very, very seriously and is very specific in what they choose to put into those plans. So thank y'all for taking a look at those.
Thank y'all for our work. It's a big project. Okay. I have a motion to approve this. I'm trying to move to approve the district campus goal and objectives for the campus and district improvement. Motion by Carrie, the second sign, Henry to approve this. Okay, I have a motion by Carrie, it's second time, Henry to approve this district and campus goals and objectives for the campus and district improvement. All in favor of that? Thank you, my love. Okay, consider take possible action regarding teacher and staff salaries.
Everybody mentioned before wanting us to go out and look at the possible structure of the teacher salary schedule is presented as it looks very similar to the staff schedule that everybody is accustomed to seeing when it comes to pay scale for teachers. One of the things that I've been asked by at least two board members is, there's a presentation that was given by Tazby when we went to SLI, and some districts use teacher-paid format in the middle, mid, and max, similar to the rest of our employees. And so Ms. Ramirez was in conversation back in fourth day with Tazby and also with our representative who takes care of all of our salary and our budgeting, staff surveys and things, to find out if this type of study would be covered. What we're trying to find out is if the board would like for me to move forward to explore this and have a presentation brought to us, and also look at the amount of change or where changes could be made in the salary schedules for the way the teachers set up and also our other staff based on funds that we'll have there.
So can we have this person kind of make a class or presentation?
Absolutely. I don't know, Zach, did he come?
A thousand dollars plus trouble.
Thousand dollars plus this trouble. Very, I would say it's absolutely well worth it.
Personally, it has to be personally, it's a little bit.
Amy did it. I contacted Amy, she was on the agenda.
I think that's right.
And she deferred us to Zach.
We just want to see all the different ways that can be necessary, it doesn't just have to be a mid point. All the different ways.
You'd have to open to, like, public to come listen as well?
If it's, I mean, if it's foreign, if there's foreign there.
Well, I think if you did, that way the teachers wouldn't come, they'd become listening as well.
And we should get to hear of the districts that maybe have different plans, and they tried a different plan, they work, whatever, so we kind of have a idea of what's good, what works on things. Should we get that sent out?
Absolutely.
Okay, so we can just directly do that?
Yes, ma'am. And then I think that's something to do for between.
His schedule is pretty full, he said, so it might be a tight, but I'll email him in the morning and send any dates that he does have.
And we're probably more at his mercy than we're at ours.
So we'll get some dates from him, and we'll have that job, which is, it would be really good if we can have everybody there, you know, to hear what's out there. We're in time in the business, and it's time for us to close session. The board of directors begin at 7:40 P.M. with a convenient close session in accordance with the Texas Southern Union Act for the purpose of discussing items listed on the Texas Department of Code and Chapter. Section 501, Section 1, 501, 49, 501, 1474, 502. Thank you very much, we're everybody in town.